It is nine o'clock, time to convene the Wayne County Board of Commissioners meeting. Please ask everyone to silence your cell phones or cut them off and do not be using them during the meeting. That includes the Commissioner's Board also and staff. So, thank you all for that. Invitation today is Commissioner Chris Gurley.
I'll just pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for bringing us together this morning. We ask that you give us the wisdom as leaders of Wayne County that we make the best decisions that will benefit our citizens and our employees. Dear Lord, we ask that you protect all of our first and foremost families and military families as it is difficult to do their job in the world we live in today. Again, we ask your travel graces when we leave this building. And as I said, please give us the wisdom that we do the right thing today. In this name, I pray, amen.
Please, the allegiance, Commissioner Antonio Williams.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes from the April 20th, 2021 meeting?
I make the motion we approve the April 20th, 21th minutes.
I have a motion on the floor, we approve the minutes. Any discussion? If none, all in favor, show sign of the right hand. Motion carries. Mr. Tenaka, special presentations?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, we do have a change in the agenda if the board is agreeable. Under special presentations, we would like to add a number four, Hurricane preparedness week, which will be May 19th through 15th, 2021, resolution that you have in front of you. And our emergency operations director, Aaron Stryker, will be here to present that. And that will be number four.
Thank you.
Motion to approve my fight agenda.
I have a motion on the floor, any discussion? All in favor, show sign of the right hand.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll start with special presentations. Number one is motion to approve mental health month proclamation for May 2021.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. I'm Emily Peacock. I'm president of the Mental Health Association. I have with me Anthony Slater, who's on the board. And we appreciate your time to recognize that May is Mental Health Month. And we need to know how important that is, especially in these times. So at this time, I will read the proclamation. Mental Health Month proclamation for May 2021. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas there's a strong research that animal companionship, human spirituality, religion, recreation, social connections, and work-life balance can help all Americans protect their health and well-being. And whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas with effective treatment, these individuals with mental health and other chronic health conditions can recover and lead full, protective lives. And whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Now, therefore, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners just hereby proclaim May 2021 as Mental Health Month in Wayne County. We call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in Wayne County to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions.
Thank you. Thank you.
And we thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for being here. Do I have a motion that we approve this resolution? I have a motion on the floor, any discussion? Any questions? If none, all in favor, show sign of the right hand. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Next, number two, we have a presentation by Tammy Childers with the Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Board.
Good morning. It was actually last February of 2020 when I was here with the partners to talk about Wayne County, and to really congratulate Wayne County Board of Commissioners and all of the partners for all of the efforts for the Work Ready Communities Certification with, at that time, over 20,000 citizens in Wayne County having a CRC. So that was pretty amazing. And then the pandemic. So this is the first presentation for me in public since then. So I told Carol I was a little nervous right now. But thank you for allowing me to have this opportunity. And I'd like to welcome Commissioner Foster, who will be serving on our Board Consortium in place of Commissioner Ray Mayo. So, thank you. Now, a little bit about the Workforce Development Board. For those of you who may not know much about the Board, we are located in New Bern, North Carolina, and we partner with our community and business leaders to oversee workforce development issues and opportunities for our region. Our Board is a nonprofit, and we have a budget this year of over $7 million of Federal Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act funds, which is designed to help train our citizens and help get people employed. So, working with employers is critical to our success right now. We are the administrative fiscal agent for these funds that's appropriated under Department of Commerce through the U.S. Department of Labor. And our role is to ensure that our local workforce system is market-driven and certainly responsive to meeting the needs of employers. In North Carolina, our workforce system is our NC Works Career Center Network. In our region, we have a career center presence in all, oops, I keep wanting to click the wrong button, in all nine counties. Four of our career centers are housed at the Division of Workforce Solutions. Wayne County is one of them. And five of our centers are located on the campuses of community colleges at Lenore, Carteret, and Pamlico Community College. Our vision certainly for our workforce is to see the educational attainment level meet the needs of local employers so that firms can compete. We are supporting the My Future NC goals for educational attainment and working with our community college partners and our school systems to do whatever we can to focus on high school diploma attainment and credentials, short-term, long-term credentials and degrees through our community colleges. Right now, it's been a real challenge, and I know you'll hear more from economic development. But we have had a challenge in addressing workforce needs, and this was pre-pandemic, you know, looking at what the economy looks like, who's in our workforce, where are the jobs, the workforce challenges, and how do we prepare our current and future workers for today? Since the pandemic, you know, technology has just been rapid to get everybody up to speed on using technology for education and everything else. And how do we evaluate success? We are starting to see, thank goodness, with the masks now, having that lifted a little, but our economy is picking up. And what we keep hearing across the region, state, and nationally, is our employers still can't find employees. Pre-pandemic, we would have thought that last March, all of our career centers were really preparing for mass layoff and trying to get customers, as they were coming into the center, ready to see what their options were available to them as a result of losing employment. And the idea of being able to just get as many people enrolled in training as possible through the short-term training offerings through the community colleges as well as long-term training. So what was interesting is, is while we thought everything was going to take off, it did not. We have not seen people wanting to go to work as quickly as we had hoped, or people enrolling in community colleges as we had anticipated. And so it's been different. Our unemployment rates, which has been interesting, has continued to drop, so that's positive. But pretty much if you drive down every business highway, you'll see help on its signs. And that's the challenge now. In our area, we are seeing, and these are the February numbers for unemployment, you'll see Wayne being the highest at the 5.8 along with Onslow County, with our region being 5.5, which is right under the state and national average. So again, our region is looking pretty good when you look at the overall unemployment rates and how they're continuing to decline. In Wayne County, where we have the population, and this may be updated since, but 122,748 with a regional employment base of 50,000, with the average income being 44,000. And the training programs that we focus on, that we're really trying to get our job seekers focused on, are programs that are going to be supported in this economy and different pathways initiatives that can really help keep them at that type of earning level. And I provided in your packet what the breakdown is for our wage population, for our workforce. And then here, you can see where the top employment in our region, government, retail, manufacturing, healthcare, and food service accommodations, hospitality and tourism. Those are the areas where we do continue to see high-growth opportunities for employment. Mentioning that we expected a lot of downsizing and closures at the onset of pandemic, we have not really witnessed that. Then we show the breakdown here of where we have been began to see some losses in employment. And you can tell that even so, retail and manufacturing, some in healthcare, is where we did see some changes, but it still remains at the top level of employment for our area. And then here, you can see for Wayne County where the top employers are and where they With Butterball University, North Carolina Hospitals, Wayne County Public Schools, Walmart, Dollar General. And then looking at where the trends are, you can see how all of the sudden, as a result of the pandemic, everything kind of shot downward. And with our largest occupations still remaining in food service and retail, but those are the areas where we also see the lower wages. And then here, you can see the breakdown of where those changes are occurring. The targeted sectors in demand for our region are in the areas of healthcare, advanced manufacturing, aerospace and aviation, construction and skilled trade, hospitality and tourism, transportation, distribution and logistics. And all of those sectors are being impacted by these workforce challenges that we see with a large number of individuals retiring from our workforce, the change in demographics, age differences, the skill shortages, job retention, learning disconnects, high school dropout rates, drug issues, and background issues. And those are, have been identified through multiple surveys. One was the Department of Commerce survey earlier, last year, that was conducted. And yet, what we know is that pathways right now for our workforce board focusing on those sectors is where we are seeing the highest growth and that has been sustainable through the pandemic. And now the opportunity to really focus on job seekers, helping them see that there are so many pathways for them to start, no matter where they are, no matter what level, high school diploma, or even if they don't have a high school diploma, to get back into the community college and start that career training opportunity on a pathway that's going to lead them to that wage that we saw, the median wage of 44,000. In our area, I mentioned our career centers and where they were located. Here in Wayne County, we're very fortunate to have the largest career center in our region, and I think with the most partners. The Wayne County Career Center here, our NC Works, has been one that has continued to stay open during the pandemic and by appointment only. They've been out in their communities, holding the career fairs and holding, when there were employers that were downsizing for the rapid response, trying to combine a session for the job seekers who were losing their jobs, but with a career fair at the same time. So Wayne County, again, became an area for best practice, that we were able to see how businesses who were hiring were definitely interested in those that were losing their jobs and trying to make that connect as quickly as possible. So it become a model for us in using in some of our other counties. Last year, our career center served over 38,000 customers, and this year, we're right on track to probably serve that many. We thought we would exceed that, but we're finding that a lot of folks are using the internet and accessing technology for their job search through NC Works and making appointments online, so it's helping. For our career centers, why it's so important for our job seekers to take advantage of those opportunities. Number one, they're free, and it's an opportunity to meet with a career advisor and spend time talking about what their goals are, what their needs are, and how to get from point A to point B. And with all of the resources that are available right now, it's a perfect opportunity for individuals to be going to school. And that was one reason why I called Carol and asked if I could make a presentation. We have the money here. I mentioned we have a $7 million budget right now. That's quite a bit. Wayne Community College has $585,000 through their adult program, their dislocated worker program, and their youth program. And just to give a little bit of background about those three programs and how individuals would qualify, if it's a youth who has dropped out of school or in that transition, 16 to 24, they want to get back, hopefully get that high school diploma, that GED, that career readiness certificate, some short-term training, you know, they would qualify. The adult program is based on income, and for the low-income adult program, they have barriers to employment, unemployed or underemployed, working part-time, typically that would qualify. There's other criteria, but that presents the opportunity for somebody to go to school and have assistance with tuition, fees, books, supplies, childcare and transportation. And then for the dislocated worker, that person who did lose their job, it's an opportunity to change careers, start something new, and one of those career pathways that we talked about. Here in Wayne County, manufacturing, healthcare, you know, those are our top sectors where we can, people train in those areas, they're going to go to work right away. And we would love to see people calling our career centers and asking to talk to a career advisor and find out what opportunities are to help them go to work. And some don't want to go to school. Some individuals will say, "School sounds great, but at this time of my life, it's not for me. I just can't do it." And we understand that. We have funded, this year, a program is through Two Hawk Workforce Solutions, and it's, we put $1.4 million into it for an on-the-job training program. And that is where employers, right now, that are saying they're hiring, they need help, to, to give them some opportunities to train their workforce. If employers are willing to hire a dislocated worker, low-income adult, or a youth, for example, they could get up to 50% of the wages reimbursed back to them for their training of that individual. Training usually occurs three to six months with that employer. And then for that job seeker, it's a permanent employment, you know, at the day they start. So that is a win-win, and we are really hoping that that will take off in our region as an opportunity to get people back to work as quickly as possible. And then the services for employers, our career centers, our center manager and his business service team meets with employers on a regular basis. They're actually working with economic development partners, holding business roundtables, and, and trying to just fully understand what those needs are so they can help raise customers, job seekers, and have a better match. They're able to talk to them about tax opportunity credits that are available to them, screening the different types of training offerings that are through customized training, for example, through the community college, or OJT, or direct employment. And I think, if anything, this pandemic, while we all have not been able to meet face-to-face with technology, there's been so many opportunities to meet virtually, and I believe the partnerships just continue to get stronger as a result. And then, as I mentioned, for our youth programs, here at Wayne Community College, they have ran our adult, dislocated worker, and youth programs for the past three decades, going into, all the way back into the 70s. But they do an outstanding job. Their career advisors not only help young people find their career goals, set career goals, and enroll in training, but find them with work-based opportunities where they can get some work experience and go to work for a couple of months, either in the summertime or during the year, as well as other career counseling, financial literacy, tutoring, mentoring, et cetera. And all of the services available for our job seekers are at the ncoworks.gov, and would encourage folks to visit the career center here in Goldsboro on Memorial Drive, right beside of Harris Teeter. And if you have any questions, I would certainly entertain them and welcome any feedback. Our website is ecwdb.org. Thursday night is our board meeting at 5:00 p.m. It is available through GoToMeeting, which we will be putting our link on today. We will have a presentation at Thursday's meeting about the Southeast Prosperity Zone and its overall labor market analysis of the region and how the pandemic has impacted. So if anything, I'll make sure I send Carol those slides so she could share them with you. And are there any questions?
Any questions? Anyone?
I just want to, Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank you for coming out and addressing all the things that you do and the partners that you have. You know, it's amazing, you know, especially with our local college here, some of the things that they do. We really appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you. We're very proud of that partnership. We, we did lose a board member, and, sorry.
No, no, I just want to also mention, I want to welcome Craig Pope, who's here as well from Wayne Community College and who's in, you know, workforce development at the community college, and appreciate Craig showing up as well and for the presentation. I'm sorry, did me interrupt.
That's okay. I'm grateful for Craig and the community college. But I wanted to say Fletcher Bazell passed away earlier this year, 2021, and it was a great loss. He served on our board from the 90s on, and at one point, the county commissioners needed him on the Onslow, or the Wayne Memorial Hospital Board, and he wanted to serve on two boards. He didn't want to give up serving on our board because he enjoyed it, but there was a rule that you could only serve on one board at the time. And when that term ended, he come right back to our board, and we hated, you know, to hear that loss as well. So we do have that vacancy, but I'll be working with Carol, and we'll be getting you some information on a board appointment. Our appointments start up July 1st, so in the next couple of weeks, I'll send a email to Carol. But thank you very much.
I got a suggestion for you. If you can talk to the federal government, tell them to quit sending $665 a week for unemployment, we might can find some help. So, just thought I'd throw that out there.
Let me share that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you again for your presentation.
Mr. Chairman, since we are running a little bit late, do you want to go ahead and do the public hearing?
We can. What, scheduled at 9:30?
Yeah, it's 9:15, yes, sir.
Well, 9:15, okay. I'm sorry, I left my clock wrong. Yes, we need to skip down and take care of the public hearing. Go ahead, Ms. Tenaka.
You need to open the public hearing?
Do I have a motion that we?
Yeah.
Okay. The public hearing is now open.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have Mark Pope here. Mark is, again, with our Regional Economic Development Group. I always forget the exact name. It's too long, sometimes even remember. But we appreciate Mark being here. And also with Mark is Ashley Boyett. Ashley is our new existing industries director here in Wayne County. Ashley started last Friday, and we're very excited to have Ashley with us and also as part of the economic development team. And with that said, I'll turn it over to Mark.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
It is a pleasure to be here, especially to talk about what we're going to talk about. But it's also exciting to have Ashley come, come before you. And Ashley, if you got a second, just, if you would just introduce yourself and tell where you come from.
Sure. Ashley Boyett, new existing industries manager. I'm originally from Johnston County, but I've lived in Charleston, South Carolina for the past six years. I worked for the city of Charleston in real estate management there, and also in private sector property management. And my family and I decided to move back home, and this was a really great opportunity and very fitting for me with my background in government, but also I have an MBA in international business from the University of South Carolina. So it's a really great public-private partnership, and I'm happy to be back home and to be working with all of you.
Are you, are you part of the Boyettes from Kinley?
My mother-in-law is in Kinley, but the other side of the Boyettes, they live in Princeton.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
Thank you. I think you will see great things out of Ashley coming forward, so we're excited to have her part of the team. So moving right along with what we're here today about is, had a great announcement on April 7th, automotive exhaust maker, and to add 96 new jobs in Wayne County was the headline. If you give me just a little bit of time, I'll read the announcement from the governor's office, just to refresh you what we did. AP Emissions Technologies and Automotive Exhaust Manufacturer will create 96 new jobs in Wayne County, Governor Roy Cooper announced today. The company will invest $400,000, expand its e-commerce operations in Goldsboro. "North Carolina grown companies like AP Emissions Technologies know the strength of our workforce, economy and quality of life," said Governor Cooper. "We are delighted to have this family-owned company continue to invest and create more job opportunities in eastern North Carolina." AP Emissions Technologies started manufacturing exhaust and emissions products for cars and trucks in 1927. In 1974, the company opened a factory in Goldsboro and added a distribution center in 1995. The company offers a complete line of products to wholesale and retail customers who service the professional automotive repair trade. AP Emissions' expansion repurposed the company's reclamation building to increase the capacity of its e-commerce operations and provide dedicated space in support of this growing segment of their business. The company's production warehouse and distribution operations will be expanded to meet the increased sales activity. At AP Emissions Technologies, we've also believed in giving back to our community, and we're proud to continue to invest in this area and continue to bring opportunities to the members of the Wayne County community, said Jessica Wolf, HR manager at AP Emissions Technologies. "When 90-year-old companies reimburse in North Carolina, it underscores our ability to support their long-term success," said NC Commerce Secretary Michelle Baker Sanders. As one of Wayne County's largest employees, this expansion will allow AP Emissions Technologies to continue evolving with its e-commerce functions and innovative approaches to manufacturing and distribution. The North Carolina Department of Commerce led a team of partners in supporting AP Emissions' decision to locate these operations in North Carolina. decision to locate these operations in North Carolina. New positions include welders, machinists, stockers, forklift operators, setup operators, general and managerial staff. The average annual wage for all new positions is $40,760, creating potential payroll impact of more than $3.9 million per year. Wayne County's overall average annual wage is $38,401. A performance-based grant of $125,000 from One North Carolina Fund will help AP Emissions Technologies' expansion plans. The One NC Fund provides financial assistance to local governments to help attract economic investment and to create jobs. Companies receive no money upfront and must meet job creation and capital investment targets to qualify for payment. All One NC grants require a matching grant from local governments, and any award is contingent upon the condition being met. You know, I want to thank our partners also that were included in this. Craig Folk is here. Craig's been very involved with the folks out of AP Emissions. We also with North Carolina Department of Commerce, the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina, North Carolina Global Transport Economic Development Region, North Carolina Community College System, Wayne Community College, Wayne County, City of Goldsboro, Wayne County Development Allowance, and North Carolina Southeast. So that was the announcement we made on April 7th of this year. And a great day it was when we can talk about 96 new jobs in Wayne County, especially with all the things that have been going on. So before you is a performance-based agreement as part of our match, the One NC grant. The grant is over a three-year period. It's split between the city and the county. Of the $125,000 for every $3 that the One NC Fund is, we have to put $1 in that. So that came out to about $42,000. That is to be split between the city and the county. We went to the city council folks last night. They approved it unanimously. But it'll be paid out $7,000 per year for three years to get the county's portion of the $21,000. You've got a pretty defined layout of how the incentives work. They are performance-based. Want to make sure everyone understands. They are doing also $400,000 in upfits in the building that they'll need to do for the e-commerce. So we'll see tax revenues from those. Those revenues are a portion of how we pay those VACs. Just so folks know that these companies generate those revenues that we usually use to give back to them in a performance-based agreement. So any questions?
Mr. Pope, what has resorted in the extra 96 jobs? I mean, what has caused to be added 96 jobs?
If you, I compare it to looking at what Amazon and some of these other folks, they're on doing e-commerce. So they're selling stuff right and left out of their shop. So they saw a huge niche for that, and they needed some workforce to develop that. And this, you know, some of the, I'll read you some of their companies that these folks are tied to. ANSA, Import Exhaust, CATCO, Eastern Catalytic, Durafit, Diesel Tech, Cherry Bomb, Accelerator, Silverline, and Aristo. Some of the companies that they are tied with, and this is a, you know, they send stuff worldwide. So it's great that they put it here. There was competition. You always have competition for the governor being involved. So there was other sites looking to put it in their shop, but we were lucky enough to get it in Wayne County.
Do you think it'll be long-term? Do you think it'll be long-term?
I think the world's gone that way. We see Zoom and WebEx and e-commerce is right and left. I think that's one of the focuses that you'll see, not only commerce, but we'll have to look at as it grows. Yeah, I just think it's a wave of the future, wave of the future. So with the $125,000 grant from One NC, we did get $96,000 that Craig will be able to use in the community college system to help train those folks. So we're very appreciative of what our community college system's best in the nation. I always say that. They're awesome. So thank you, Craig. So any other questions? Thank you.
And speaking of the community college, that's another reason that we are pushing advanced manufacturing. I mean, not only for this project, but other projects also.
Very interesting times right now. So it's a good one. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone from the public have any comments to make?
Thank you, commissioners. I just wanted to make sure that you guys knew that at the community college, we have been looking at this. You know, there has been several mentions of us. And I think a couple of weeks ago, I came and presented to you all about manufacturing and some of the skills needed. As you know, we are trying to expand our manufacturing learning capabilities through site, the Center for Industrial Technology and Engineering. And our first expansion was in the welding area. We knew that a lot of the jobs that Marcus got inside the project were in welding. And then I also talked about, you know, trying to make sure that we tie better to the Wayne County Public Schools and creating opportunities. We do have our workforce survey back. Ms. Childress here gave us a lot of information and talked about some of the workforce issues that employers are currently seeing right now. I can tell you that here locally through this, we are looking at people that did not get jobs, were lacking the skills, number one, for the occupation. Number two, they were lacking work experience. Number three, they were lacking the soft skills. So those are our top three things. So skills training is very important to this. We will, of course, do everything we can to help them to meet that. Ms. Akok, I also wanted to expand on the reason for them with the expansion. So they own a portion of the company. I think the project was called Project Reclamation. Through a diesel exhaust system, there is special reclaiming of emissions technology that happens in that exhaust system. And they're moving a component of this because they've seen it expand quite a bit. So they're taking a portion of a facility that was not being utilized, an older facility, and they're going to be putting that inside there. They're going to make the parts here, they're going to ship them to their other facility in Pennsylvania, where they will assemble those and put them together. So thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience have any comments for this public hearing pertaining to this Any other board members? Do I need the motion to go out? The public hearing is now closed. Ms. Tanaka.
The incentive agreement.
I make a motion that we adopt this item with the grant of $21,000.
Is there any form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? That is spread out over four years, correct? Three years? Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Chairman, the only comment I would make is what a great investment. $21,000, 96 jobs. And it just goes to show you the importance of that young lady right there in regards to working with existing industry. It is important. Existing industry brings more jobs than bringing in new companies. So it's very important, the job. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anyone else? If not, I'll favor show the sign of right hand. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and appreciate the work that Mark has done and appreciate Ashley being here as well. And you'll be seeing a lot of Ashley. So she's really kind of drinking water from a fire hydrant right now, but she really is, she's drinking it well. So, but we're lucky to have her. Next, we'll go back to special presentations. Motion to approve Wayne County Association of Educators' resolution to improve student learning conditions as requested by Commissioner Bethropoff.
Yes, I ask Mr. Tiffany Gilchrist, President of the Wayne County Association of Educators, to come speak on this. Here she is.
My presentation, will I be able to use that?
Send it to Ms. Carol.
No, I sent it to you because I had asked you about that.
Oh, I thought you sent it to her as well. I apologize about that. I guess you have to go off of your, I apologize. I'm sorry. I didn't know you wanted me to send it to her.
No, that's fine. Good morning, commissioners. It's my honor to come before you today and speak on behalf of the Wayne County Association of Educators as the president, and specifically to bring your attention our resolution to improve student learning conditions. To make clear my purpose, I feel I first need to define and outline what it is we mean by learning conditions. Our working conditions, the working conditions of all employees in all facets of jobs for Wayne County Public Schools, are our students' learning conditions. If we cannot address the lack of investment in public education in the state of North Carolina, then we will never bring the change we want for our students' learning conditions. We cannot expect students to learn their best with outdated materials and major lack of school-provided learning supplies in crumbling buildings and without TAs, IAs, counselors, social workers, nurses, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, and custodians. Our schools will lack the essential personnel that ensures the students have the support to excel in public education, which is a constitutional right we must uphold for them and their families. Our resolution to improve student learning conditions outlines the logistics of how the state of North Carolina would be financially reinvesting in public education, specifically Wayne County. The eight outlined actions that comprise the resolution are as follows. Section one, highlights our goal for reinvestment from the state of North Carolina. This would raise North Carolina from 46 nationally in pure pupil spending and would ensure that the spending would be more equitable for more rural districts in the eastern and western reaches of the state. The proposed budget would have us meet the national average of per pupil spending that would add $2,866 per student in Wayne County. With the expected number of 17,469 students enrolling next year, this would add $50,066,154 to support our students. This reinvestment would expand the funding needed to hire additional support staff that our children desperately need. Just a few examples are schools that have to share nurses. Why do our students not deserve a trained medical professional at every school? Schools have to share bus drivers. Why do our children have to share bus routes, leaving them missing anything from a few minutes of beginning of class to whole chunks of class time? Classes have to share instructional assistants, IAs, and teachers assistants, TAs, instead of being able to focus all their time on the same classes, which ensures differentiated instruction for all their students. Investment of staff positions is vital because a large number of the individuals working as classified staff that fall into this category do not make a livable wage. We move to action three, which is to change the pay scale so that they start at a minimum of $15 an hour. Classified staff give back to our communities in such a big way, yet they are so underappreciated. WCPS has a shortage of positions that are vital. Just a few positions that are open because we do not pay enough are bus drivers, cafeteria workers, custodians, plumbers, social workers, psychologists, electricians, plumbers, carpenters, HVAC technicians, ground crews, and so many more. And I pulled this information from the WCPS page yesterday, May 3rd. Many individuals in these fields go to work for the private sector because of the pay, leaving our schools and students lacking in the support they need. In section four, you'll see we are asking for just a 5% salary increase for both active and retired classified staff for the next two years. Restoring master's pay and longevity would reward your veteran educators that hold these positions and degrees that would encourage the best of the best to stay here in Wayne. In order to also be competitive and attract the best, we need to look at revamping supplement pay. Just a few counties have a lower pay than us, but that doesn't make us competitive. We need to reinvest in our county as well. Moving to section five, as the Board of County Commissioners are very familiar with the building and construction needs for every campus, our schools in Wayne County have whole sections of trailer classrooms because of the lack of funds to expand and crumbling in age buildings with HVAC systems held barely together. Our students deserve to be educated in buildings that are safe. In section six, I would like to ask a series of questions. Would you take away health benefits from any other public servants? Police officers, firefighters, first responders? I would guess no one would ask these public servants because they give so much of their time to ensure that their communities are safe and taken care of. Why do we not ask the same for educators who are dedicating their life to educating our youth? Anyone hired at the beginning of this year, January 1st, will no longer get health benefit cares when they retire. All public servants deserve the healthcare benefits they have become accustomed to in their retired years. Wayne County is already trying to reinvest in broadband internet and connecting our citizens around this large county. So I want to say thank you for starting to tackle this large problem. If the state invests as well, then we should be able to bring all individuals who live here into the 21st century. The last action is the one with the most concern just from a glance. However, let me break it down. We are not asking to eliminate the vouchers program. That is nowhere in this section. It simply says to freeze the current funding, which is at $60.6 million and statewide only affects 15,970 students. These vouchers are currently worth $4,200 per student plus their schools pulling our 9,528 public school funds. The state voucher enrolls in the state voucher program. Oh, my bad. If a child, sorry. If a child enrolls in the voucher program, then Wayne County Public Schools has to pay that child's new school $9,000 per child. Private institutes are taking in so much public funds from public schools and our hard-earned tax dollars. All we want, which is again, not to eliminate it, but to freeze this from increasing until they are held to the same act-academic, financial, and transparency standards that public schools are held to. Fairness is all that we ask. I am aware I have presented this board with a substantial amount of information, but I hope my argument in support of the WCA resolution to improve student learning conditions will help inform this elected board of county commissioners of the needs of our students in Wayne County. Wayne County is the 10th largest school district in the state, and we should be attracting the best of the best educators and employees. We should be the beacon of light for public education in all of eastern North Carolina. However, that is currently not the case. I understand there have been past transgressions with our public school system over the past few years, but under new temporary leadership that I would like to see be more permanent for some individuals, we are finally steering in the right direction. Now, you might ask, why am I sharing this when you have no control over the legislature and what bills are passed? You have no control over what our students in Wayne County get. Actually, we also have something we can do. That is to pressure our legislative officials to pass education reinvestment bills that would bring our county up, lifting up our students and bringing them opportunities they otherwise would not have. By adopting this, we can all request appointments, write letters, send emails, or simply pick up the phone and call our legislators and say, how can you ensure that Wayne County gets these eight resolution points? This will take time and a lot of reinvestment, but with the community and its leaders coming together, I believe we can achieve everything listed above. Thank you.
Thank you. What a pleasure to be on.
Mr. Chairman, may I say? First off, I want to thank you for, you and your staff for thinking about the bus drivers, the custodians, and the teachers. We need them, and we need them to have a living wage. We need them to be able to do their job and not worry about having to come out of their own pocket for supplies and other items. In regard to the ventilation systems, I just want to give you some good news. We met with our representatives and the county, Wayne County is going to get close to $100 million from the American Rescue Plan that should be used for those type of things. So that won't be something that you have to fight, you know, with the legislature about, but you probably will have to fight with the school board and make sure they use that money wisely. I had a concern in regard to the vouchers, and maybe you can clear it up for me. Is this affecting charter schools as well? Because I have a favorite charter school here that they do amazing work here, and I wouldn't want them to lose a dollar.
They will not lose any money. They will keep the current level of spending that they have. The families will still be getting $4,200 for their current voucher program. We're just asking that until they show the same transparency that we do. Some schools, some charters, and private schools are already starting to get ahead of the game, but not all of them are. And if we are going to spend public tax dollars on something that is not as transparent and is taken away from public schools, then we need to ensure that first. So they will not lose any financial support right now.
So is the charter schools considered private?
For the voucher programs, I believe so. You can use charters, your voucher program can go to private or charters.
First of all, what you presented is not a resolution. I mean, you covered it, but...
Would you like me to read it?
What's the pleasure of the board? We have it. We have it. We have it. In fact, we've got two copies of it.
Sorry about that.
So what's the pleasure of the board? So, what's the pleasure of the board? I've got an issue, I mean, my wife's an educator, but I've got an issue with one of them. It says here that Wayne County doesn't have $42 million worth of needs. Where'd you get that figure from?
This is the, can I have our, or did you give him all the extra?
No, it's more than $42 million.
Yeah, I mean, but you know, that's...
So, you're talking about the $50 million investment?
Whereas, school districts have more than $8 billion in unmet capital improvement needs, including $42,792,359 in Wayne County. Where'd, I mean, where'd you get those figures?
That would probably, I'm sorry, I'm not looking at the document.
You want to, I'll let you look at it.
Oh, well, thank you. Appreciate that.
The ninth whereas.
The ninth whereas.
I mean, what you're doing is asking us to adopt something that the figures are wrong on. I'm just sending a wrong message to somebody.
No, we actually got this information from the state of North Carolina. I would have to pull it up. So, that is my fault for being unprepared and having my notes with me today on that, but no, we actually pulled that from the state of North Carolina.
Well, those figures are not correct, so...
Well, that's what we got from the state of North Carolina, so that's in concern there.
Do what now?
What are the correct figures?
There's, I'm gonna say it's close to 80.
Can I have my phone, please? No.
What is the number?
I can pull it off my phone.
I think it's closer to 100 million.
I think he's right. But, but they're here or there. I mean, that's the document that's got the funding on it, and you can't vote on something like that.
Hold on. If the board is willing to entertain for two seconds, I could tell you exactly where I got that. So, again, I apologize.
What was the number?
The money, the money from the...
Hey, Mr. Chairman, wait, geez, I'm looking that up. Although the intent is, needs to be applauded in regards to improving our schools, there are just so many issues that are brought up into this particular resolution that you're asking us to approve. There are just so many other issues that are in there, I unfortunately would have to decline from supporting this.
Can you...
But, again, if somebody would like to make a motion to approve, that would allow us to vote on either approving or disapproving.
Well, I think right now, we're giving her a moment to...
Oh, sure, sure.
To explain. And also, I want to just elaborate a little bit. I got an opportunity to meet a bus driver from Wayne County, and we're losing bus drivers here. They're going to different counties. They're getting $5,000 more in other counties. $5,000 more dollars. And, you know, I don't think the burden is really on this board. I think that really, we have to really point fingers at our educational board because they're in control of that. They're in control, they're gonna make sure our custodians have what they need, our teachers have what they need. This board has given ample and additional funding to Wayne County Board of Education. We've exceeded what we absolutely, absolutely have to give them, and they just have to be better stewards, in my opinion.
But, I hate to interrupt, we are asking for a reinvestment from the state.
Yes, I understand.
Okay.
I understand, I'm just talking generally to the board here.
I apologize.
Well, motions of what send this resolution, this board has absolute no control at all over it.
I am aware. That's why I said at the end, where I said, you might ask, why am I sharing this? That's why we are trying to ask that you as well join us, the teachers, the educators, the employees of WCPS, the parents, the community, to say, we need to reinvest in Wayne County Public Schools. Do our students not deserve these fundamental things? Do we not deserve to have this for our children? Because if we want to have career-prepared readiness, then we've got to start in elementary school. We gotta start right there, continue and push through middle school, continue to push through high school, so that way we can have career-ready individuals.
Well, I make a motion that we do support this resolution. Is it perfect? No. However, it will give the legislatures an opportunity to see if they strongly are concerned about our community.
And this is the thing, I mean, you know, to be a bus driver, it requires a CDL. I can go drive a dump truck if I got a CDL and make a whole lot more money with a less of a headache than running around with some kids yelling and screaming all day, for the mighty salary. I mean, and at the end of the day, yes, no, we don't have anything to do with any of this, per se, but we do because we have, we all have constituents, kids, or family, or whatever, that are attending these schools, our teachers here in Wayne County, that live here, work here, that voted for some of us, you know what I mean? It's nothing to, it's nothing to show support for them, you know what I'm saying? This is what they put together, this is what they're feeling like will help move education along in Wayne County, not even just Wayne County, North Carolina, period. The voucher issue was a big deal years ago. I don't know how many know that, but it was a big deal, and it took some while to get that pushed through because of the money that it was taking out of public schools and putting into private schools. I'm pretty sure everybody on this board went to public schools. You know, and that's a big deal now. We're taking all these kids out, putting them in private school, and then, so our money is decreasing, which less teachers, less paid, the teachers aren't supplements, all different types of things that we're losing here, and our education is going down. I mean, I understand, like I said, I've seen a couple of resolutions that we have absolutely nothing to do with or any control over, but we vote for them. I've seen it on the city level, I've seen it on the county level. I mean, you know, it's just showing support for those. We can't say that the legislators are gonna do anything or do any of this, and that's on them. But, right now, I mean, it's just, it's just showing support for the teachers here, showing that we stand behind.
Has this been presented to the school board?
I have tried, and they denied me yesterday. I did give a public speech, and me and Mr. West again spoke briefly afterwards, where we are going to present this again to the board coming the next month. Now, I want you to think of this like a wish list. This is what you wish our students would have in Wayne County Public Schools. I want you to also think about that that way. I also apologize, this is not a computer, and I don't know how to readily look up information so quickly. I might be a millennial, but I am only so tech-savvy when it comes to a cell phone. So, again, I apologize. I can guarantee you, and if it would make you feel better, as soon as I get an extra computer, I will email all of you the exact links that I got all these facts from, so that way you can see my footnotes, if you will.
There's one thing here, the investment, you know, 2866 list, I looked it up while we were talking. I think Wayne, North Carolina is 9,528, national average is 11,934, so that is a difference of 2406. You might want to look at that. I just pulled that up.
Okay, it also depends on the years, because I think we might, did you get that off DPI?
I just got it off the computer here. Let me see. I think what we're asking is, you know, make sure the numbers are correct, you know, when we're presenting them.
I think you can pull different numbers from different places. I don't know what the actual teacher resource that she might be using. You said you're using DPI?
I would be using DPI and some other state websites.
I'm doing Public Schools First NC.org.
I would pull off North Carolina DPI because they would have our most current accurate, up-to-date information. But, again, I greatly apologize, I feel like I'm slightly wasting time for you right now.
Not at all.
But, as soon as I get home, and I apologize, I do live in Princeton, so as soon as I get home, I will email all of you the footnotes, so that way you can see where I'm getting my figures from the state of North Carolina.
I think overall, you know, we're not really, the numbers are not the biggest factor. The biggest factor is us starting the process so someone could hear the serious needs that we have in Wayne County. You know, I mean, to me, that's just something that would distract, we're trying to, you know, pinpoint where the number would be. I think that, you know, overall, like you said, it's a wish list. Let's get there, let's discuss, let's see what they can do opposed to what can't be done. So, is a motion?
Mr. Chairman, just one quick comment here, and that is, it's not a wish list. This is a written document with specific items in it, and as such, you're asking this board to agree to everything that's in this document by supporting it. And so, it's not just a wish list. I understand there are great needs there, but you're asking us to endorse what you have in written form here, and I can't agree to all these items. Some of them, I understand the need of it, but I can't agree to some of these things of extending health benefits, as an example, or raises for retirees and so forth. The legislature is the one that determined who was going to get health benefits as of January the 1st. We don't.
Yeah, I do understand that point, but the point that I'm making is that you are the leaders of our community, you are the leaders that these people, that represents these individuals, and that you should be fighting for their rights as well, and pushing our legislature to say, I need you to support the staff and the students and our families and communities in Wayne County, and the way to do that is to reinvest in public education, particularly addressing these items. Now, Mr. Drury, if you wanted to, we tried to reach out to you to have a private conversation to see what you would endorse, because if you would have had, in our private meeting, said, well, I just, I can't get behind this section, and then we couldn't reach an agreement, then we would have compromised and said, you know what, maybe we can remove this section that we present to the board, so...
You wouldn't give me a copy of the resolution for me to review before I agree to any meeting as such, but anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion on the floor, is available to discuss.
One comment, I did meet with Ms. Kilgore, made mine.
I am so, okay, wait, let me stop right there. Thank you so much, Mr. Freeman. We did meet, Ms. Acoff, we were going to meet, but you had an emergency, so I do thank you for your time. Mr. Foster, I did not have the pleasure to meet with you. My Vice President, Joe, had a pleasure to meet with you, so I apologize for not mentioning that. Oh, wait, and Mr. Williams, he met with you as well. I greatly apologize that I did not mention that.
Yeah, I spoke with Mr. Alicia Brit Pierce, she pretty much went through the document with me, and I was, and I had to actually, Commissioner Foster actually forwarded the email, and I had got a copy of the document, I read it.
And I mean, I mean, that's the thing.
Sorry, Mr. Drury, I have to apologize to leave you.
I forwarded the email, so I don't know why you didn't get it, Mr. Drury, so, I mean, maybe you should check your email a little bit better or something, I don't know, but we all got it, so I don't understand why you're saying that you didn't see it or you couldn't get a copy of it.
The, what he's saying is...
Nothing about that, I'm just saying, you know, maybe you want to do a little bit better job of that. And it's like, we can make a million excuses, we can say the numbers are wrong, we can say this, we can say that, but at the end of the day, it's a simple thing of supporting the teachers, students, families here in Wayne County. And, you know, we sit up here and we advocate for facilities, we want to build the best-looking building, but you can have the best building with the worst students because we're not putting what we need in the students. You know, it takes more than just the building. And that's the thing, and it's like, you know, if we mess around, we have no bus drivers because they say, well, I'm just tired of this. You know, I mean, when I was in school, I remember my best friend's sister, she was a senior, she drove the bus. They don't do that anymore. It's actually adults out here that have to go to class, get their CDL, and drive a bus, and they're sitting there like, man, I'm putting up with this, why? You know, and for the amount of money, I mean, you know, it's like, it's just a decent living wage. I mean, and it's not even like it's a full-time job, but, you know, it requires what it requires. It's not like, okay, well, you got a license, just go drive. No, you have to go do something special to be able to drive this bus, and that's the point, and the kids' lives, the safety, it's a lot of things they have to do, so, I mean, insurance and everything, I mean, it's basic stuff. It's a basic way of life, the things that they're asking for. I don't think they're asking for anything extreme. I don't think that we have to jump through a bunch of hoops or anything, I just think it's just a simple agreement. We're saying, hey, we support them, we support the educators of Wayne County, here you go, our legislators. It's on them what they do, from that point on. If they say no, fine, we know that. You know, we say no right here, this board, then the educators know what they're dealing with. No different. If the school board says no, they know what they're dealing with, with the school board. It's as simple as that.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor. If there's no other discussion, we need to take a vote. Does anyone else have any comments? All right, all in favor, show a sign of the right hand. All opposed?
Motion passes.
Do what now?
Vote in favor.
Motion passed.
What was the vote, Madam Clerk?
It was four to three.
Four to three.
No, Mr. Freeman, Ms. Acoff, Mr. Foster, and myself, that was four.
Is that correct? Thank you very much for your time, and have a wonderful rest of your day.
Just one thing, please make sure we get the figures correct.
Oh, you will, as soon as I get home, you will. I apologize for that.
Oh, you know.
Our biggest issue is, we don't need to send a mixed message to our legislators. You know, my biggest thing is the $42 million, and I understand what Commissioner Foster says, but if we got 100-plus million dollars worth of needs, and we tell them we got 42, and we're sending up something that a board approves, that could be an issue for us, so...
You'll get my footnotes, hang on a second.
We will check, she said, we'll simply check it, and if it's wrong, correct it, and go from there.
Let's move on, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So, next is our walk-on is Hurricane Preparedness Week Resolution, and we do have our Emergency Management Director, Aaron Stryker, here to present that. Thanks, Eric.
Good morning, everyone, and I appreciate you all taking the time to have this walked on. So, this is just part of our continuous improvement of our public outreach program. So, along with this, I'll be working with Joel Gilli in Public Affairs next week to get emergency preparedness information pushed out to the public. So, part of this was actually started pre-COVID. I was working with Ginger and Human Resources during new hire orientations to try to get some of these family preparedness kits, evacuation routes, communications plan pushed out to new hires within the county, so we're just going to be pushing this out to the public. So, for the resolution, it's, whereas hurricanes and tropical systems have impacted every North Carolina county with disastrous results, and whereas North Carolina is repeatedly one of the leading states nationally for overall damages from hurricanes, and whereas hurricanes and tropical storms can cause life-threatening hazards such as flooding, storm surges, destructive winds, tornadoes, and landslides, and whereas flooding claims lives every year, usually when motorists attempt to drive through flooded roadways, and whereas insurance companies suggest residents review and update their homeowner's or renter's insurance policy to ensure it includes coverage for flooding, accidental damage, and natural disasters, and whereas people are less likely to be injured when they have, when they have prepared ahead of time and know what to do when a hurricane threatens, and whereas people should prepare their personal emergency supply kit to use at home or during an evacuation with enough food and water to sustain the members of their household for three days or longer, and should know their evacuation routes and comply with local and state authorities when asked to evacuate, and whereas the ReadyNC.org website is available to help people make emergency preparedness plans and provide current weather and traffic conditions, and whereas the National Weather Service, local and state government officials all work together before and during a hurricane or tropical storm to reduce the dangers posed to lives and property and provide a quick, effective response to these storms, and whereas the Observation Hurricane Preparedness Week by Wayne County residents provides better protection from the dangers of hurricanes and tropical storms. Now, therefore, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of May 9th through 15th, 2021, as Hurricane Preparedness Week in Wayne County encourages all county residents to plan and prepare by assembling their personal emergency supply kits and updating their emergency plans. So, that, if there's any questions or comments?
Any comments, sir?
Chairman, Mr. Stryker?
Yes, sir.
I like this resolution. I think it's a great idea, I think it's a great thing, because we always need to prepare. You know, a lot of times we wait for something to happen, and then we react, which is, which is bad, but, this guy asked a question, even with this resolution, you can't make sure... But, this guy asked a question, even with this resolution, you can't make sure that everybody prepares.
Correct. The best we can do is put the information out there, and hopefully we can reach, reach people.
Yes, and with this resolution, we're just supporting that this is what you like for hurricane preparedness, correct? We can't guarantee that anything.
Correct, so this is just resolution supporting a public outreach program in an attempt to encourage people to prepare.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, so it's clear to the board, so some of the board members to understand that with resolutions, we're just supporting what you're stating. We can't make sure that you're doing it, we can't, you can't make sure the community is doing it. It's just putting awareness out there to the community and letting them know that this is what we stand for. We stand behind you, and we support this resolution. Thank you, sir.
It was a pleasure, the board.
Big motion we accept.
I have a motion on the floor, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, show a sign of the right hand. Thank you, Aaron.
All right, thank you.
Can we, can we take about a 10-minute break?
Sir.
All right, we're going to take a 10-minute break, we'll be right back. We are back in session, uh, thank, next item is what, the Department of Committee?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, the Department of Committee met this morning, and we recommend the following. Uh, the Oakland Fire Department Fire Commission seek, uh, wish to appoint Nathan Dan Pipkin as the Oakland Volunteer Fire Department Fire Commissioner to replace the late George Poole, and that's in form of a motion.
I have a motion on the floor, any discussion? Okay. All in favor, show a sign of the right hand.
Also, we have the, uh, uh, for the next meeting, uh, May the 18th, well, the recommendation from the Eastern Carolina Council Area Agency on Aging, to reappoint Ms. Linda Harper, Jimmy Ford, and Martha Bryan for the Area of Agency, Agent Director. The next one would be the ABC Board. The ABC Board wishes to replace Pam Silver with Mr. Bill Pate. He will be appointed at the next meeting as well. And the Wayne County Public Library Board of Advisors, Ms. Shirley Edwards and Ms. Catherine Bro are both up for reappointment. The Library Board wishes to reappoint Ms. Catherine Bro and appoint Anita Schreinath to the Wayne County Public Library Advisor Board. That's in form, that's for the next meeting as well. Also, we're still, uh, we still need applicants for the Housing Appeal Board, and we're still waiting on the replacement of Ms. Ethel Barnes for the Council of Older Adults, and we're waiting on the Board of Adjustments from Fremont to get back with Carol. And that's all we have.
And the first one we voted on, we'll vote on today, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next, we do have the Consent Agenda, and we did go over the consent agenda in our pre-agenda meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda. I have a motion on the floor, Mr. Darley made a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is any discussion? If no discussion, all show a sign of the right hand.
And then, under New Business, we do have the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Video Update.
Hello and welcome to this week's Video of the Week. This week was a busy week, as we had a presidential task force meeting for the Resilience Initiative, and the North Carolina Association of County Clerks held a virtual conference with help from NCACC staff. President Ronnie Smith convened his Presidential Task Force this week, and the group reviewed the draft of the initiative report. This was an opportunity for direct input from task force members to make sure the final report from the group reflects the work of the task force over the past year. NCACC Manager of Strategic Initiatives Laurel Edwards has been working closely with the group as they've met to address food system resiliency in North Carolina. She will now work with the task force members to forge the final report over the next few months.
So many of you, and all of you that's on this board, with this agenda, every one of you volunteered, and you volunteered because you care for your county, you care for the state, and you care for all the citizens, and most of all, those that are less fortunate and not receiving the proper nutritious meal that we all should.
The North Carolina Association of County Clerks gathered over a virtual platform this week. Debbie Harris from Davidson County was awarded the Howard Holly Outstanding Clerk of the Year Award for 2019, and Penny Owens from Tarrell County was given the award for 2020. They recognized both last year and this year's winner, since there was no meeting last year. Don't forget to visit ncc.org and sign up for our weekly update to stay informed about important topics from all 100 North Carolina counties. The form to sign up is at the bottom of the homepage. Well, that's all we have for this week. If you have questions about anything you've seen here, please email us at communications@ncc.org. Thank you for watching, and we'll see you next week.
And one of the reasons we did want to show this video as well, when it talked about the Clerks Conference, our own Carol Bowden has been elected as a director to the Board of, a Board of Directors for the, for the County Clerks Association. So we're real proud and happy for Carol, and appreciate her service to the state, so.
And then we have. Public, we have public comments at this time. We asked that you, uh, I mean, you had to sign in a register, so we don't need your name and.
We have one individual, they have to sign it by nine, we have one, and that would be Dennis Lewis from.
Okay, Mr. Lewis, just public comments at the time.
Don't drop the right, the wrong thing.
Mr. Chairman, I requested of you, if you could get some video ready for today at the last meeting.
Yes, sir, and I will forward it to our staff. And I don't know whether they can pull it up or not. The, the, the thumb drive.
Our county attorney responded to those requests, or? Did you receive the?
No, the video request, he didn't. The video request was made of the chairman. I carried it to him, and you gave it to her.
And I forwarded, and I forwarded to the staff.
And so what we need is a video where we can play it on this screen. This is public forum, my tax dollars helped pay for the projector and it helped pay for the screen. Now I should be allowed to use it. What that video has is two segments of two separate meetings that have already taken place. There's no way it can't be public record.
Mr. Parker, what, what's, do you have any guidance on this for this, or are you a Mr. Neal?
If the video still exists, it certainly is a public record, and he's right. That's not what I responded to, I responded to some public questions.
He responded, the attorney responded to an email request for further public records that were initiated by a ridiculous response I received at the last meeting. All I'm wanting is for y'all to look at two short video clips, and then when I read a response that I was given for my request for public records, you're going to see some idiocy. Now, I can't help that, that was on someone else's part. I'm the dumb son of a tenant farmer. I gladly say it every time I come here, except last meeting I didn't, and I apologize for that. I say it, because that way then you won't have to say it about me. But I'm trying to expose some truths, and so far, somebody's trying to cover it up. So why don't we just take a little time, think about it? Think about what I said, my tax dollars paid for that projector, paid for that screen, and the meeting has already taken place. Why can't we watch the video?
I'm going to have to go into advice of council, because I, I mean, I don't know.
If that is still available, that is clearly a public record.
I believe the focus was on the email, and we overlooked the video part. So we responded back to his email, and we thought that that was what was asked for. We did not go back and, and look at the video, but we will look and make sure the video is available for, for public input for our next meeting.
And you ask what that?
Yeah, if you would email that, that section again as well to us, what you want.
What's the dates? What's the dates, sir, of the?
Third time.
Sir, can you tell me what the dates are?
I can't.
Can you tell me what the dates, can you tell me what the dates are of the meetings?
January 15th, 2019, not short of time. I provided it, if I have to provide it again, that will be the third time. Other meeting, June 7th, 2016. But that is not in the public comments section, that would be at the end of the meeting when y'all talk.
Well, you know, it's when the previous board talked.
True, when the previous.
When the previous board talked.
If I could, I would like to apologize to the new members of the board. My request with the flash drive was made on March 17th, 2020. Most of y'all weren't even on the board at that time, and I should have recognized that. I did not, and I humbly apologize. When I'm wrong, you'll get an apology from me.
Mr. Hinekut, can you take care of?
We'll have that ready for public input for the next meeting, or the meeting in.
In two weeks.
June.
June.
Okay.
Mr. Hinekut, may I ask that when you do get it ready, could you just send us a copy, so we can take a look at it prior to the meeting?
Yes, be glad to.
Because this is, um, you're, well, since I've been here, it's your second time here. I said, since I've been here, this is your second time here, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, so I mean, I want to make sure that we give him the benefit of the doubt, and I mean, like he said, I mean, it is his tax dollars, I mean, he's a citizen of Wayne County, he has the fair, he has a right to show the video, I mean, if there's nothing graphic or nothing, you know what I mean, extreme, so I, I mean, I totally agree, so.
Thank, thank you, Louis. So before he leaves, do we need anything else from Dennis?
Do you need anything?
No, I'm asking, I'm asking them, do we need anything else from you before you leave, I mean, as far as?
If we got the dates, if he's got the exact times, would be helpful, but if he doesn't, we'll go through.
He says it's at the end, it's at the end of the meetings, correct?
I will go through it one more time. Well, look, I can put it on a flash drive and forward it to you, but she says you can't accept a foreign device. Well, I've seen some of it on that screen, the only way you could have got it was with a foreign device, but it doesn't work for Dennis Lewis. And so I want to know why this board is singling me out. You had that thing for 100, as of today, it's 148 days you had that flash drive.
With the reasoning for we don't let people just automatically walk up and put something in, we don't know if it has a virus.
I understand that, I mean, I, I understand that part of it, but.
I do too, but if I gave it to you 148 days ago, shouldn't someone have looked that?
And, and again, I believe it has been misplaced, so you, you were told that it was misplaced, and we can't find it, so.
How many times has that happened to anybody other than Dennis Lewis?
Mr. Lewis has nothing to do with who, who you are or your request.
Would, if you were standing in my shoes, would you believe that?
Yes.
Well, hopefully we get, we don't, hopefully we get this out for you.
Well, we get, we get it.
Y'all haven't even heard about this.
I understand. I understand.
That was the only one for public comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The public comment section is now closed. County Manager report?
Really have nothing, just to remind people, vaccines are available, and again, get your shots. So we're still working at the Boston Building, but we have seen a great decrease in the number of requests for vaccines. As we mentioned at the last meeting, if we get 24 more, we'll come to you. So please get your shots, let us know if you're interested, and we'll be glad to come out and see you. But again, we have to have a minimum of 24. And that's all I have for the chair.
Okay, thank you. Board of Commissioners Committee reports, before we go into that, I, I have a couple of items that I want to put before the board, just for information. The first one is, when we had the unfortunate incident out at the river, we had the loss of two lives, very, very unfortunate, and we're still keeping the family of those victims in our prayers. But we, uh, there was a vital piece of equipment that the county needed specifically for situations like that, and our ERMAC Water Rescue Team needs a piece of equipment, and they don't have the funds to, to get the piece of equipment, and it's a side-scanned sonar. And I've talked to the County Manager about this, and we're, we're not 100% sure on the exact cost, but according to what we pulled up on yesterday, we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of $26,000, and it's a side-scanned sonar. They did bring some sonar equipment in for that incident, but it had to come in from other counties, and I, and I do not remember exactly where the equipment come from that, that they used. But I would like for this board to consider purchasing that piece of equipment. And so our, our Water Rescue Team will have it, and also that particular team works very closely with the Sheriff's Dive Team, so it's, it's, it's actually two groups, but it, but, but most of the time, it's a joint effort any time that something like that is needed. And I'd just like for the, to consideration on purchasing that piece of equipment and, and presenting it to, to the ERMAC Water Team.
Let me add to that just a minute.
Okay.
And the, um, that, that piece of equipment is portable, and it's able to be towed behind any water vessel, whether it be jet ski, any size boat, all that type of thing, so we did clarify that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I, I know I fell off a cookie truck last night, but I'm right in the process of upgrading the electronics on my boat. And they provide sonar and the entire scoping and so forth that is marine, and my cost is around $3,000, so I'm just wondering how it jumped from 3,000 to 26,000.
It's entirely different, it's entirely different system.
I'll send you the, I'll send you the stuff.
Well, I didn't say they don't produce one that's 26,000, I'm just asking.
I'm not asking to get this approved today.
Okay, okay. I'm just asking them to at least look at some options, that's, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
All right, and also, with help from Raleigh, we hoped, it was also discussed, and, and especially the Commissioners that went out to the river to, during that unfortunate accident. We use Johnson County's Command Center, and we're very thankful to Steve, Sheriff Beazwell, and Johnson County for providing that for us. But we're hoping to get some funds from Raleigh, at least the funds has been asked for, and there's no guarantee we're going to get it. But if the funds are approved by legislators and. no guarantee we're gonna get it, but if the funds are approved, uh, by legislators and in, in Raleigh, uh, I would like to see that project move forward also. Uh, the money that, that, that we've been told that they're trying to get will probably come close to, uh, purchasing the, the, the vehicle, but there may be some funds that will need to come from the county to, to outfit it or whatever, but, and, and again, I'm not asking for anything today, I just want to make the rest of the commissioners aware that, you know, this has been asked for, and, and this will be vital for all of Wayne County, you know, and what department it goes to, I could care less as long as it's taken care of.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a comment here. I reached out to Sheriff Pierce and let him know that's on top of my list of priorities for the coming year, but also there's a few grants out there for such vehicles and equipment. So if we could get the vehicle from the, from the state, go out for the grants to get the equipment that we need to put in, in there, but I think you're right, it's a vital piece of equipment that we need here.
And, and like I say, we don't, we're not asking for anything today, but we just want the board to be aware that we're looking at these items. Uh, and, and the last one, and, uh, Angie is working on this for me, uh, the, the battleground park at it, uh, on the river, uh, we've, we've got, we just need some clarification on that piece of property. Uh, it's, uh, being, uh, mowed and maintained partially by our facilities, uh, department, and also it's being used, uh, for some weddings and different events and, and reenactments and things, and, and my concern, and some of the other commissioners' concern is, we just need some clarification on the liability insurance. We want to make sure that since it's being used for, by the public, uh, for events, and, and Angie says that they do have to, she just told me this this morning, that they do have to show proof of insurance when they have something like that, but I just, I, my concern is, is the county's liability on something like that. I just, I, we just want, I need some clarification on, on, on that particular piece of property. Who looks after that?
Kendall, you can kindly address that.
We know it also, I, I mean, the organization, they look after the building, they're doing rent it out for various events. We, we keep it mowed, we don't do any maintenance on it at all.
Right, there, there is a separate nonprofit, and that's part of the nonprofits that we fund as well. They get a, a small portion, uh, can you remember?
And, and, and we don't, and we don't have a problem with that. My concern is, we just want to make sure that the county has no liability when something is going on out there.
Mr. Chair, um, this came up like in November, December with Mr. Quick and so on and so forth, and one of the things that we made clear was that for any event on county land, there should be liability insurance, no matter what the event is or where it's taking place, the county should have some type of clause in place demanding insurance.
Well, Angie assured me, assured me, assured me this morning that they do have, they have to show proof of insurance, but I did not know that till this morning, and I already had this on my list, so that's, that's reason we discussed it.
And my understanding is, that's a separate private nonprofit that, and we've just, you know, historically have helped maintain, cut grass and those type things, it, it's not that we quote-unquote run it, or it is county property.
Okay, so it's not county property?
It's not county property. We, we, we do fund a little bit through the nonprofit, you know, I, I can't, it's ten thousand?
They actually submit their expenses, and we reimburse them. The, we own the land, the building, they can strip it and sell it.
So we own the land?
If we own the land, we still need our ability then, exactly.
Right, anybody who was interested in history gave it to the county.
Okay. I did not know that. I was, always thought it was a separate private nonprofit.
No, no, it's, it's, it's county property.
If we own the land, we need insurance, or they need to provide insurance.
We'll check into that, yes, sir.
Well, Angie said they do, but I just, I just wanted, and I didn't, like I say, I didn't know that till this morning, so...
But Mr. Chair, that's with any thing taking place on county land, or county properties.
Okay. And it needs to be stipulated what that, what it needs to be as well. I mean, there needs to be a dollar figure, which our council can tell us, you know, what is...
We just need some clarification on that.
We will.
I mean, we're not, we're not trying to stop anybody from using it because, you know, it's, it's, it's...
But there is a separate board that kind of runs the day-to-day operations, you know? We, 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 we do not run the day-to-day operations of it, so, as, as far as any contracting with private events or historicals, so, so, again, that was my misunderstanding.
Okay, all right, and that's, that's all I have for items to bring before the board. Uh, all right, other book, uh, committee members, uh, Mr. Darden?
No comment.
Okay. Commissioner Barbara Acock?
No comment.
Uh, Commissioner Williams?
Yes, sir. Um, The Ice Storm located downtown Goldsboro is having, uh, a summer entrepreneurship program where they're gonna be teaching life skills, um, they're gonna give you the opportunity to earn while you learn. Uh, it's gonna be, it's gonna start June second through August twenty-eighth. Uh, the deadline to enroll is May twenty-second, uh, of this year, and you email an essay, um, about yourself at info@theicestormnc.com, and the reason that they're, that, um, The Ice Storm is doing is we wanna create some jobs for our young people, we wanna teach them the skills that are, gonna help them learn how to fish opposed to, um, borrow, so I think it's gonna be a great program, so it's, it's limited spaces, so, um, any youth from sixteen to twenty-one, um, apply. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Foster, Commissioner Foster?
Um, yes, um, I had a Mr. Barry Dixon out of Greenville contact me the other day. Um, he's been in mental health service for twenty years, uh, successful mental health, uh, and he's planning, he's wanting to come to Goldsboro. He has a building on seventeen fifteen, seven fifteen Seminole Street, and he's having a problem with parking, um, creating seven parking spots because it's almost impossible on that land where he is, and the city's been giving him a little bit of a hard time about it. He had spoke with the director, I think, of the day reporting center, I think that is, and they had talked about, um, possibly writing a letter for seven spaces for him to be able to conduct business across the street, and, um, he had to clear that with Mr. Honeycutt. Mr. Honeycutt said because the business was for profit, that, you know, he didn't feel comfortable doing it, which I, I totally understand that, and, um, but we're, I, this man's not asking for any money, anything, it's just seven parking spots to be used just so he can open up his doors. He really doesn't even need the parking spots because it's parking all along the street on his business, but it's just a requirement by the city. Um, he's bringing ten to twenty jobs here, jobs starting at twenty dollars going all the way up to a hundred dollars depending on what your certification is, and I just think that it's an opportunity for, and he's also bringing up service, which is the mental health service to those that are in need. Um, he's, has a good rapport with the lady at the day reporting center, I don't know her name, but from my understanding, they've been doing a lot of talking about the mental health side and the day reporting and how, you know, the community resources and how they could help each other, and I just think it'd be a great asset to the community, and it's in a great location for her and for the guys and girls, women and men that go over there. Um, I know, well, I can't say this for sure, but I remember in the past, you know, some private businesses, um, using public parking spaces, whether it be city-owned or county-owned, um, to operate business, and I don't see why with this, it's only seven spots that are really aren't even needed. It's really more or less a letter of endorsement saying that he can use the parking spots to open his business, and I just think that, you know, like I said, you, you're talking twenty jobs at twenty-plus dollars an hour, which is a good thing for Wayne County, so. Wanted to present that, have something that the board could think about and look at. I, I will, um, email pictures of the building, or you can ride by and take a look at it or whatever. I understand any concerns, but I just think it's a good thing to move forward. I mean, it would be no different with anything else that we approved in the past or anything, so.
Mr. Chair, um, may I comment? Um, so he's gonna immediately have about twenty jobs, um, once he's approved with the parking, he'll be...
Yes, I mean, this is, I mean, when I, I actually met, went to the facility and, and met with him, I mean, he had a stack of applications sitting there ready, but he can't move, it's no need of trying to hire employees if he can't do business, you know, and he's said that he would move locations if he had to, but that's a lot of more money and everything, and sometimes you just be like, well, it's not even worth the investment at this point.
I mean, I, I think overall, you know, if you look at how we always wanna create jobs here, and we, we end up paying companies basically to either upfit the equipment, you know, I, I don't think that it would be a, a loss for us, even if we did a lease for the seven spaces on a, on a, on a short-term basis, um, you know, and we could come up with a dollar amount, maybe it could just be one dollar for a year, just to give them an opportunity to get open and, um, and go from there, you know, um, what does our, um, attorney say pertaining to doing something like that?
Uh, can I, can I inter, make a, ask the question first? If the building is in the city limits and they require parking spaces, if the building's there, there's got to be some parking spaces assigned to it.
It's a house.
A house?
It's, it's, it's slash commercial slash residential in that area on Seminole Street.
It's the same street that the, um, uh, IT and all this stuff's on, directly parallel with the, with the health department.
Okay, all right, I, okay, I wasn't clear on what type of building it was, I thought it was a business. I mean, I didn't realize it was a, a house.
They've got several businesses through there, but they're actually, most of them are like residential stuff. If I'm thinking in the right sense, you're right.
The old doctor office is...
Okay, you're right.
Okay, so, so I had a question for our attorneys.
It might very well be that the facilities committee would want to consider it based on some other things that I understand they're gonna talk about today.
Okay.
Short-term, uh, there, there would be no problem with short-term. But it seems like the facilities committee might want to have that request in mind in their discussion today.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Gerley? Um, I wrestle with to say anything about this or not, but I'm going to, and if I get too far, just, just whatever. Um, we as leaders in this county need to realize that we got a problem, um, with drug use. Um, our sheriff department does a fantastic job. Uh, the drug squad, the ACE team, yeah, the interdiction team, they do a lot to, um, curb a lot of the issues that we have with the drugs. Um, but they can't do it all. I mean, their, their focus is trying to stop the majority of the large volume, and they're, and they're doing it, we can see that, on, on drug seizure money, uh, and, and, and other illegal activity. But, um, this past week, we had a, um, and, and, and the problem is, is we have this probably every week, it just so happens I know about this one. Um, we had a little girl pass away from a heroin overdose, um, weight drug overdose, I don't know what it was. Uh, second time in a week and a half that she's, she's had, she had some issues. Um, now, that's not the county's fault. That goes back to parenting. Um, we need to, uh, uh, as leaders, we don't need to stick our head in the sand and say it don't happen in little Wayne County. Their road structure we got, uh, in Wayne County from ninety-five to forty, from seventy to the coast, prime time, I mean, you know, it's more than just industry that's coming through, coming through Goldsboro and Wayne County. Um, we need to realize that, and it's not just drugs. Um, Commissioner Williams and I rode back from Raleigh and, uh, had the discussion on some stuff, and, um, as he knows, there, there's some other issues that we have in our county, uh, that we need to, we need to address, and it's gonna take the support of our leadership to try and curb some of it, to keep from getting into details, so I'm just gonna leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Horace?
Yes, um, to kind of piggyback on what our county commission, our county manager was stating about, um, the vaccinations, the hospital has also seen a decrease in the number of people coming out, and it's funny because the requirements have been relaxed now, and people aren't coming out. You know, the uptick of COVID is, COVID is upticking here in Wayne County again, and with the relaxation of the masks and so on and so forth, it's only gonna get worse, so I'm encouraging all folks to go out and get the vac, vac, vaccine, you know, so please do so, and that's it for me.
Thank you. Uh, I did miss one item a while ago when I brought the other three up, I had it down at the bottom of the page and just overlooked it. Uh, I got a call yesterday from, uh, DOT, uh, and I've, uh, referred this to Commissioner Barbara Acock. Uh, the Evans family in, in Fremont, Andy Evans's family, uh, has, has talked to DOT in, in Wilson, uh, about possibly naming the bridge right there where two-twenty-two crosses, uh, seven-ninety-five, naming that the Andy Evans Bridge, and, uh, I talked to Giles Harrell with DOT yesterday, and I asked Commissioner Barbara Acock, I gave her Giles's phone number, and, uh, asked her if she would to, uh, to give Giles a call and, uh, and then work out since it, it is in District One that she represents, uh, and see, you know, what the steps are in, in the process and probably getting that name changed, uh, named after Andy Evans, which he was the mayor of Fremont, so he falls in the, in the, in the category that his name can be used, but that, you know, that's a long drawn-out process, and, uh, Commissioner Acock said that she would be glad to, to, uh, look into that, so I just wanted to let everyone know that that possibly could be coming up, you know, sometime in the future, and thank you, Commissioner Acock, for taking care of that.
You're welcome, thank you.
And that's, that's all.
I, I got one more thing. You, you brought up something about DOT.
The, the other thing is, citizens, and it's not just, it's not just Wayne County, but the citizens of our state don't realize how much they cost, they cost herself. Uh, we want to complain about DOT can't do this, DOT can't do that, our roads got potholes, you know, we can't get our dishes cleaned out, but yet, I think it was the last DOT meeting we had, if I may correct me, I think it was first part of March, they said that they has, at the first part of March now, they has, DOT has spent four million dollars on litter cleanup, four million dollars to pick up trash 'cause people are too sorry to carry it to their dump or put it in a trash can. For what, I mean, that's, that was in March, we're in May. What, I mean, how much has it cost us? You know, I know they've, they have, um, they passed the, uh, I call it Litter Act or whatever, but for the, um, from the state, but people need to realize that money can be used for a whole lot better, or put to better use, i.e., some of our back roads that we complain about every day. So I just want to reiterate, you know, please throw your trash in the right, the right receptacles, not out the window.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I comment on?
Yes, sir.
On the trash issue, actually, um, this is for, for Chip as well. Um, I know we had initially got the sign, you know, started the process of the signage, um, on Durham Lake Road, um, have we gotten those signs out yet? Okay, and I also had, um, on Old One Seventeen, um, a gentleman yesterday told me that he caught someone throwing bags of trash out on Old One Seventeen, right before, it's when you first turn on... throwing bags of trash out on Old 117, right before, just when you first turn on Old 117 and up by the fire station area. And he, you know, I told him that, you know, I would discuss that with the board, see if we can get some more no dumping signs over there in that area. And so, because he tracked them down and he, he followed the guy, which could be pretty dangerous sometimes, you know, you find somebody throwing, he tracked them down, no one made him pick it up, and took them to the dump, took it to the dump. Another concern that some constituents had, and I think you probably could remember this, Chip, it was a petition for improvement of a subdivision, and it was Eagle Ridge Drive, you remember that, where they put a petition together? It was about four years ago. Well, the constituents, they, they haven't seen anything happening, so they brought it to my attention and want to know where, where they at pertaining to that, because they had over 60% of the owners there sign the petition, so.
Yeah, we, the board has basically, you know, we did the original assessment, street assessments, and they've kind of put everything else on hold because, you know, the costs associated with it. And it was a huge project really to do, to manage, because we're not in the road business. So, that becomes a board issue if you want to move forward and begin doing those type projects again. The problem I think we do have with some of those petitions that we do have, if you decide to go down that route again, those petitions are probably old, the property is re-changed, so you would have to go back and redo the petitions all again. But probably a year and a half ago, the board basically said, we're not looking at any more additional street assessments at this time, so. But if the board wants to, you know, that, you know, we'll have to really start the whole process back from square one.
And, and overall, I think that this community, they, they understood that their taxes would probably go up, and they didn't have an issue with that, as long as they could get, you know, get a, a road where they can drive through properly, you know. So, I mean, I think that, you know, we, we should give, give the opportunity to individuals that want to have their roads paved, you know, if there's 60% or more of them that want to do that, and they, they also have the understanding that it could raise their taxes.
It would definitely right, because each property would be assessed based upon their, their road frontage on that. One of the things we also found out through the process is sometimes cheaper for individual property owners to do it themselves than have the government regulations of bidding out an engineer, bidding out, you know, the whole nine yards and going through the process. You know, it may be cheaper for the residents sometimes to really consider doing that themselves.
Yeah, I, I think overall, though, that this particular community, they had already had the AOK that it was, that it was happening. So, now, what do I say to them that basically they, they, they had the mindset that they were gonna get it paved already, so.
It, it was a board?
I think that, yes, sir.
I was just gonna check the kind of section, I think only one project that approved that was the, it was just the North Creek and Canterbury, and those have been completed maybe about two years, I think, at this point. And I'm not familiar with the order of the list, but that was the only project that's been approved so far. So, there, each time that you go through the process, you actually have to, there's a formal process. You certify the petition, you open it for public hearing, and you have to do that for each neighborhood. I don't know where that particular neighborhood is on our priority list. I'd have to look at that, I cannot remember. But I, I do believe the next one in priority would have been the Lane Tree subdivision, which is north of Canterbury.
Eagle Ridge was third.
There, third, okay, there you go. It was third.
It was third.
What's it like a $17,000 assessment per lot?
Yes.
And it's spread out over there.
They have to pay that over a 10-year period.
And it's attached to the lot.
It's attached to the lot.
It's about $1,700. For North Creek, it was about $1,700.
Thousand.
$1,700 a year if they chose.
Okay, okay, so 10 years, okay. So, you don't have to have it 60%?
I think it's 75.
75, okay.
I think it's 75 by statutes. I'd have to, I'd have to double check.
75. And if I could inject here as well, that community that we did the project in got an estimate to actually have the roads resurfaced. And that, that came in at right at $400,000. That project ended up, by going through the, all of the requirements of the North Carolina Department of Transportation, that project ended up costing 2.00...
I can't remember, I can't remember, but it was over.
Right at $2.5 million. So, again, it's a lot less expensive if the community can get together, get a homeowners association, and actually contract out to have that done.
And as Commissioner.
It was just so much cheaper.
Commissioner Drury said we, we got fussed at a lot because there were mailboxes and things that were in the right-of-way, that DOT would not allow in the right-of-way. We had to tear those things down, and we got fussed at because, you know, hey, why are you tearing it down? Well, it's in the right-of-way. If you want it to meet minimum DOT standards, these are the standards as far as drainage, as far as what's allowed in the right-of-way or not, that you have to meet. It, it really is a, a very involved process.
Very costly as well.
Costly, time-consuming as well for Kendall, for staff, for our tax department, for finance. You know, there is, I, I would caution you about moving forward, about future, because we got blamed for a lot of issues that we really had no control over, but because we were meeting DOT standards, it was then, you know, there.
Well, I think overall, if you have something in place that lets these homeowners know, if, if you're gonna be getting paved, you may possibly have to move a mailbox or some other things may have, as long as people have, it's, it's in writing and they understand those things. I think they care more about their car not getting tore up when they're driving through their, their, their community, opposed to, you know, a mailbox shifted a little bit over to the left or to the right.
These were like, these were like constructed brick mailboxes. I'm talking, they drained them, because we've done some of the work. Drainage had to be removed if it was not DOT stamped. The brick concrete walls had to be removed, the brick mailboxes had to be removed. And then when you do, when you go to DOT-approved highway, that eliminates any golf carts, dirt bikes, whatever, riding on the road too, because that becomes a state-maintained road and the law enforcement, you know, writes tickets for this. So, people need to realize exactly, and.
We, we would have to up.
Well, this particular, this is not a DOT community, though.
It will be.
It would have to.
That's a requirement of the legislation is that it has to be turned over to the.
Yes.
Chair, I'm not thinking, I think you can, you go back to that community and talk to them, ask them, is this what they want to do and they want to move forward? Because at the end of the day, that's their cost. That's what they would have to assess, and they would have to know that, hey, your mailbox may be tore down, this may happen, this. And if they say yes, and 75% say yes, and they're willing to pay that, then, at the end of the day, no matter what the effort is on the county's level, we should have to, we should do, just do what's right and, and get it done, and, and assess them for that. So, I think that's the main thing right now, just making sure the community still wants to do it. They know all the requirements and everything that's gonna go forward, and we, and if they say yes, and they're willing to pay that over 10 years, that's, they have the right to do that. We shouldn't come up with a bunch of excuses about the time or the effort or the, all these reasons, just because we don't really want to do it or sound like we don't want to do it. No, it's up to that community because that's their right to do it in any other community out here. So, I think that's what we need to do, and we can address this hopefully in the next meeting. And I just have one more thing. The planning board, will they be making a decision or something on this, on the issue at 715 Seminestreet and the parking at some point soon? Because I want to get back to him and let him know, because I don't want, like I said, it's jobs, you know what I mean?
For the facilities, the facilities board.
These jobs. I don't know about anybody else's, but that's, that's my thing. So, I just want to know, like, what's the process going to be on that?
We should be, the facilities committee's meeting today.
Okay.
And that should be part of the discussion.
Okay.
And, and another thing on the street issue too, what most people don't realize, one of the largest costs was to underground utilities, because, you know, they were put in years ago, and, and that was a, that was one of the big expenses was underground utilities, cable, water lines. I mean, it was, it was a, that was a big hunk of the expense.
And, and also, the county has to up front the money, you know, as well. So, yeah, it, we, it is paid back, but, but the county does have to up front the money.
And, and, correct me, but I think that they're also paying interest on that payback.
About 5%?
Yes, yes.
Well, I appreciate that this board listening to the concerns, and Chip, any other information you may have, if you could email it to me, it'd be super. I appreciate it. And if we can get those signs over there on Old 117, it'd be great, if the board doesn't have a problem with that.
On the trash, you know, the gentleman that found the trash, I found some on my road also. I called the deputy who's in charge of that. He located a person, he fined him, and he made him pick it up. So, this person, if.
Yeah, that's what they did too. They, they, they found him and they, and they've been fined, yeah.
Yeah, Jeff Sparrow of our solid waste department is, you know, he's kind of the solid waste enforcement, so if we do have illegal dumping, Jeff will go out and investigate.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, do I have a motion that we go back in closed session? Do I need a motion or just?
I make the motion, we go in the closed session.
Okay, I have a motion.
To consult with our attorneys.
We go in the closed session. All in favor, show a sign of right hand. We are now back in closed session. We are back in session. I think we have one action item we need to take care of before we adjourn. Commissioner Dorie? Mr. Chairman, I move that Wayne County hire local redistricting service with Attorneys Caroline Mekki, Poynner Spruill LLP, and Marshall Hurley of Greensboro for the redistricting of the Board of Commissioners and Board of Education districts.
To quote Allison, I think with appropriate budget amendment.
With the appropriate budget amendment.
Allison would be very proud of it.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Doherty. Any discussion? No discussion, all show a sign of right hand. Did I get it right that time?
I'm sorry, my bad, my bad.
I don't think it's my fault, but someone's blown it.
It's all my fault, I take the blame. Okay, we're adjourned.